Okay, welcome everyone. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for June 5th, 2024. Call this meeting to order. This is the Meeting of the Town of Auburn School Committee. It's being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of all open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of this meeting. Please note, this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. All right, Meg, I'll turn it over to you.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment: We will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, we're going to take a moment to recognize Cecilia Wuzbicky. Tonight is our last school committee meeting, and I know she is so sad about that. But in all seriousness, Cecilia has served the Auburn Public Schools for nine years with care, compassion, and dedication. Cecilia has been an enormous support to me upon becoming superintendent, and for that I will be forever grateful. Thank you, Cecilia. I hope that we can all take a moment to acknowledge Cecilia's contributions to the Auburn Public Schools and wish her well as she embarks on her retirement adventure. Cecilia has always done all she can to support our kids, our programs, finding ways to find the funding, finding ways to be creative, making sure we were doing everything the way we were supposed to be doing it. So she will be sorely missed, but I think she's a little excited about retirement. Thank you, Cecilia.
Thank you.
Good pleasure working and serving all of you, so thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for all you've done. Good luck.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I'm leaving you in good hands with Mrs. Jen Stannick, so.
Nice.
We'll be checking in on you in the future.
Frequently.
Yes.
Don't change your cellphone number.
Yeah, yeah. Don't change your number.
Right.
Do not block us, whatever.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, well, best of luck. And yeah, we'll be keeping in touch with you.
I'm grateful. It's been, it's a really great school district. You know, I've been really wonderful to work with, very supportive. I've worked in other districts where school committees haven't always been as supportive, but it's been really a nice, it's been a nice time. I'm appreciative, so.
Great.
Easy, that's for sure.
Yeah. Great. All right, well, thank you for those nice words. And we will move on to the next recognition.
Thank you. So the first one is the Auburn Municipal Scholarship recipient. The Auburn Municipal Scholarship Committee is pleased to announce that its 12th annual scholarship in the amount of $1,000 was awarded to Lauren Smith, an Auburn High School senior, who will attend Roger Williams University in the fall to study special education and elementary education. We had some amazing applicants. I sit on that committee, and it's always so difficult to select the one that you think is deserving, because there are many, so many are deserving. And just so that folks know, the scholarship fund is available, is able to be awarded due to the generosity of the Auburn taxpayers. It's derived from donations made by Auburn residents on their quarterly real estate tax bills. All funds go directly to Auburn graduates who meet the criteria established by the scholarship committee in keeping with MGL Chapter 60, Section 3C. Residents are encouraged to consider making a contribution via an upcoming tax bill so that the scholarship can continue to be awarded annually. So thank you to the townspeople of Auburn who continue to support that.
Yes, definitely. I did not know that. That is pretty cool.
Yeah. And the next one again is a listing of those who are awarded the Auburn Chamber of Commerce scholarships. As you know, the Chamber does an enormous amount of support for us over the years, giving nearly half a million dollars between mini grants and scholarships to Auburn High School, Auburn students. So on Wednesday, May 15th, Auburn High School Principal Dan and myself attended the scholarship breakfast held at Jay Anthony's, and six of our seniors received scholarships in the amount of $1,500. Trevor Amero, Nicholas Gillette, Jacob Goldavich, Leah McDonald, Tyler Poschakis, and Lexi Seds. And I also believe Anthony Seaman received a scholarship as well. He was there that morning. So it was a lovely morning. Yeah, good stuff.
Great.
And you will see that in your packet, you also have a list of all the scholarship recipients.
Yes, and there were lots and lots of them. And it was lots of variety of names, so it looks like, you know, a lot of kids benefited, so.
Yeah, and this year at Auburn High School, it was, they gave out the most scholarship money ever. It was like $154,000 in scholarships.
Very generous. Yeah, that is great. Okay, and best of luck to all those kids moving up in the world. All right, I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes from May 22nd, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 22nd, 2024. A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we don't have our students here tonight.
Nope, we do not.
No report from them. I think the report would be they're done. So, yeah.
See through the chair that it was so nice to watch Bella graduate and all.
Yeah.
Going to McGill, so that's so exciting. And she was, she looked so happy, so.
Yeah.
We'll miss her.
Yes, we will. She was excellent.
You should tell her to come back and visit.
Yeah, good. All right, I will turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. And as we do each meeting, we'll start with our student spotlight. So this evening, we have Dr. Lopez and Mr. Moriarty here with two of their students, Allison Ladue and Brentley Brown, and I'll let them come to the podium and introduce themselves and give us some information on their project.
Hi, everyone. It's great to be here. We're super excited to present one of our ongoing community service learning projects. That's really been a tradition at Swanson Road. Mr. Moriarty is now spearheading all of this. I'm going to let them explain everything, and I'd love to introduce Mr. Moriarty and Allison and Brentley to the microphone to explain and take it from here, so thank you.
If you need to, Dr. Lopez, you can gently. Move that down. Unless Mr. Moriarty is going to speak first.
Yeah, I'll speak.
Okay.
I'll try to split my voice loud enough for everybody to hear and still get the microphone and not blast everybody out. I'm Mr. Moriarty. I am the physical education teacher, along with Sean Dunn over at Swanson Road. We team up, we do everything together, and we try to collaborate as much as possible. We are trying to fill in the big shoes of Ann Shane the best we can. She started the whole Turkey Trot here at Auburn, and she has done a wonderful job, and it truly makes a massive impact around the world. We're just trying to fill her shoes, and we're doing the best that we can, and we really are very thankful for the Auburn community for supporting us for all of the years that we've done. And we will have our two wonderful students that have been lucky enough to know Mrs. Shane and now work with Sean and I, so why don't we come on up? You can do our little speak, and if we have any further questions, all three of us can answer them. Down here. It says YouTube on it.
We're going to share screen. Do you want the video up or?
No.
Not yet. When they're done? Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Hi, my name is Allison. I've been a student at Swanson Road for three years. In third grade, we started learning about Pride and Purpose, which is an organization that we have helped fundraise to help build up schools in South Africa. During PE, we learned about this community service learning project and how it would help children in another country get the education and tools that they need. Simple things like chairs, desks, books, chalk, and crayons are some simple things that they needed. During PE class, we ran laps that were then totaled and turned into money that our sponsors gave us for running. All of this money was collected and sent to Pride and Purpose to help schools in South Africa. Every year at Swanson, I was excited to participate in this community service learning project and to be able to help and make a difference for other kids in a different part of the world. We found out last year that using the funds that were raised over the past 14 years, Pride and Purpose was going to build a brand-new school for the children in our honor. The new school was named the Swanson Tynico School.
Hello, my name is Brentley. Mrs. Shane, who we had in PE in third grade and spearheaded the Turkey Trot, came back to Swanson to share this great news. The new school, the Swanson Tynico School, means or translates to the Swanson Gift School. This was special because all of the money raised was so appreciated that they wanted to let us know and say thank you in a special way. After participating in the Turkey Trot each year, I realized that every little donation and small action, when put together with others, can make a difference. The Swanson Tynico School started with small, simple bricks, stones, and dirt floors. It is now a painted building with a simple structure that has welcoming artwork and decorations made by the children there. Though there's no furniture or tools for learning in the school yet, we hope they will get the supplies they need to learn from future Turkey Trot community service learning projects at Swiss. In this video, you'll see what the Turkey Trot looks like during PE classes at Swanson. You'll also see the beginning of the school dedicated to Auburn and Swanson being built. Finally, you'll hear a personal message from Sir Richard Branson, the founder of Pride and Purpose. "Thank you to all of the former students of Swiss and all of the Auburn community for helping to make this happen."
Nice. Nice job. Awesome. Yep.
Ready for the video?
Let me put it full screen.
Hello, Turkey Trotters. I do hope you realize that the Turkey Trot is one of Pride and Purpose's very few annual fundraisers, and it makes a massive difference in the lives of those less fortunate. I personally am immensely grateful. You all make the world a better place just by being in it. Thank you, and please keep up the trotting.
I love that he called you Turkey Trotters.
Wow, that was excellent. That's awesome. Wow, so do you guys know how much money you raised over the 14 years?
It is, it is quite a bit of money. I know two years ago, we raised about $12,000, and then... Thank you. I have not totaled everything. It's, it's a wild amount every year that we see, and Ann's last year, she was absolutely in tears. Every year I've been doing it, it is, it is truly a moving experience in watching this video and seeing all the updates and seeing when Ann started it and Ann first started taking the pictures and what truly all the living conditions and all the schools were like, and seeing what it has become now. It's, it really has looked like a completely different place. As so, I probably could go back and talk to Ann and get a full total number of how much we've done, but, you know, at the end of the day, that full total isn't the important thing, it's the change. It's the building. We've built a school. It's not, you know, money's one thing, but seeing that we've built a school and that it was so important that it's been named the Swanson Tynico School, I think that's the most important part.
Yeah, absolutely. You kids should be very proud of yourselves. That is amazing. Any questions or comments?
I have a question, Madam Chair. How do the two of you feel, or how do your friends feel about having, having built a school with your efforts? What do you think about that? Go up to the mic.
Um, I mean, we feel like really good about it, and like, it's like a really great... It's like really good to like help other people out with like everything that like they need and stuff, so like when we heard about this, like a lot of people felt like really good about building a school.
What about you, Brentley?
Um, yeah, I feel really good about it too, and just like the experience and like when I was running, I thought of what I was running for and how much it probably meant to the kids in South Africa. And my friends, they also thought it felt really good to help out the kids in need.
It's very special to have a giving spirit and to see a need and want to help. So I compliment you and all the staff at Swanson Road to have that giving spirit. I think we need more of that in the world today, and I think the world would be a better place. So thank you, and thank you for sharing your experience with us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I love those sweatshirts, too.
Yeah, it looks great. Great. Looks great. Nicely done. Nicely done.
Good job and great presentation.
And will you come up and just shake our hands before you go? Come on up. Come right up in front here.
Dr. Lopez, how long have you been involved? Because you've been doing it with the program.
It's been 14 years the project has been going on, but 13 years I've been involved with it.
Thank you for doing that. Nice presentation tonight.
Great job, guys.
Excellent.
Great job.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, and you are, you are free to go. I know it might be an exciting meeting, but we understand. Thank you.
Have a good night. Have a great summer, too.
Thank you. Keep up the hard work.
Take care. Thank you.
Most exciting part of the meeting. Let's just wrap this up.
Yeah, well, we'll keep moving on at least. We'll go to unfinished business.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the AEA contract. I'm pleased to share that on Tuesday, May 21st, the Auburn Educators Association ratified their contract that will be in effect from July 1, 2024, to June 30th of 2027. I'd like to thank the AEA negotiating team and the Auburn School Committee negotiating team for their diligence and hard work in bringing this process to a successful conclusion. The names of those who participated are listed below, and before you is a request to approve the contract as presented.
Okay, any questions or comments in the committee during this? No?
I will seek a motion to approve. I will make that motion to approve the 2024-2027 AEA contract.
Second?
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it is a vote. There you go. We are done with that chapter. So, yeah, and thank you to the, the teachers that, you know, negotiated with us and their patience and diligence and...
A lot of time.
Yeah, it was a lot of time and a lot of work, so. But we did it.
We did it.
Yep. All right, so that's great. We will move on to new business.
Very good. So first up, Mrs. Bailey is here this evening to talk about the Auburn High School Concert Band and Chamber Singers Performance Trip to Scotland and the UK. So there is a request in your packet, and I'm sure, Ms. Bailey, I think we have a short presentation. If you want to come up to the podium, we can pull that up for you. And you can tell us about the trip.
I'd also like to just thank Cecilia for all of her hard work and friendship to the music department over the past several years. You've been an incredible, incredible help, and I'm sorry for any buttons that I've pushed, but you've always, you've always made it work for us, and we're deeply, deeply grateful to you. So thank you, Cecilia.
So I had a tab open with the PowerPoint, and now I don't see it, so I might have to get up and...
Do you want me to just share the whole screen and then maybe they can open there?
It was there. Because it's not that...
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here to present our proposal for Scotland 2025. So just a brief history of student travel. I've actually been involved with all of these trips except for the 2007 Washington DC trip. So in 2005, Washington, Virginia Beach; 2007, Washington DC; 2009, Philadelphia. In 2011, we had our first trip to Disney. 2013, we did Cleveland-Chicago; 2015, back to Disney. 2017, Cleveland-Toronto and Niagara Falls; 2019, Disney. 2021, we were in the preliminary stages of planning a trip to the UK. And last year, both the Chamber Singers and the Marching Band traveled separately. The Chamber Singers performed at Carnegie Hall in New York, and Disney, the Marching Band performed in Disney and Universal Studios. So here are a few pictures from last year's Universal and Disney trip. So in the bottom right-hand corner, one of our selfie check-ins, they had to take a selfie with a chaperone. So all of the chaperones were at different points in the park, and they had to have all of the chaperones' pictures in order to win a prize. So that is with middle school band director John Schmidt. And here are the Chamber Singers in New York City at the famed Carnegie Hall performing the Verdi Requiem. So we've performed in many prestigious locations throughout the year: Walt Disney World, Universal Studios, Carnegie Hall. We've also participated in numerous competitive festivals in Chicago, Philadelphia, Cleveland, and New York City. This year, we'd like to move away from competition and experience music for music's sake, so by experiencing the rich choral and brass band traditions of the UK by partnering with local high school and community ensembles in Scotland and performing concerts together. So for our pre-trip activities, we'll explore the connection between European brass bands and American windbands through repertoire and discussions. We'll explore the connection between Celtic folk music and American folk music. Country music is a direct descendant of Celtic folk music. We'll also explore the British choral tradition, how it influences and has shaped American choral music, and we'll have Zoom calls with our partner schools and ensembles and build connections with students. So our preliminary itinerary, so 4/22, we will have our overnight flight to Edinburgh. Right now, Boston has direct flights from Logan to Edinburgh, so we can avoid Heathrow or any of the exchanges there. We could also fly via Aer Lingus and transfer through Dublin, so again, we can avoid Heathrow. Heathrow is great if you fly British Air, but otherwise, it can be kind of crazy to navigate. So we're looking to get a direct flight from Boston to Edinburgh. So on the 23rd, we would explore the city of Edinburgh. On the 24th, we would do the Harry Potter walking tour. We would go to Edinburgh Castle, which is this magnificent castle up on a hill. Takes almost the entire day to see even a fraction of it. And then we would actually have our first performance at the famed St. Giles Cathedral, so you can see the interior and exterior of that church. It's right at the base of the High Street in Edinburgh. Then we will travel up to Inverness, where we will take a Jacobite cruise down the Inverness River into Loch Ness and visit Urquhart Castle. On the 26th, we would go out to the Cairngorms. It's kind of like going to the White Mountains of New Hampshire here, although, you know, it's kind of the ski area of, of the Highlands, although the skiing there is incredibly treacherous, where we would do the Strath Space Steam Railway. We would see a sheepdog demonstration, so we'll get to see them herding all of the sheep. We would go to the Speyside Coop Ridge, which is where they make all of the barrels for whiskey, but it's incredibly fascinating watching how fast all of these workers put together these barrels, taking apart barrels, putting them together. And then we would attend a concert at Eden Court, which is like going to the Hanover Theater, so it's a really lovely performance venue in Inverness. On the 27th, we would go out to Dunrobin Castle, which has a falconry, so they can actually have a live falcon demonstration. We would have a concert with either the Highland Swing Band, the Inverness Schools Wind Band and their choir, and/or possibly the East Highland Wind Band, depending on each of these groups' availabilities. Then we would travel back to Edinburgh, stopping at Sterling Castle, which is really fascinating because it's actually fully restored. So instead of going through ruins, you're going through a castle during that, that time period. Then we would stop at the Wallace Monument, and then the Kelpies, which are these magnificent steel sculptures of horse heads, which you can see down on the bottom right, and return to Edinburgh. And then on the 29th would be our return flight to the United States. It's a morning flight, and you generally, generally arrive back at Logan between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM, depending on, on travel. So the price per participant is $4,289. It is paid directly through the tour companies. So unlike previous years where we've traveled with suburban tours, we've had to take checks from the students, everything goes directly through their website, so it takes everything out of our hands, which is lovely, as Cecilia can attest. It does have, included in that price, the travel protection, including basic health insurance. In the packet, there are the different tiers of protection outlined in there. It is twin-room occupancy. If you've ever stayed in the UK, the beds are significantly smaller. You don't have the big double beds with students sharing four rooms, so they'd be sharing just with another partner. Breakfast and dinner are provided daily, and lodging would be at the Edinburgh Haymarket Hotel, which is the hotel on the bottom right, and the Carbridge Hotel, which is just outside of Inverness, out in the Cairngorm Mountains. It's in Abia Moore. So, and it's a kind of a rustic, cute little hotel, and that's the one here on the right. So obviously, it's a very expensive trip. I know how, how difficult it is. I grew up incredibly poor. I'm the oldest of four girls, and my parents worked really, really, really hard to help us go on band trips, but a big part of that was we had to do the fundraising. So here are the different fundraisers that we are planning on with, in conjunction with Fame, our Music Booster Association. So again, we would not be funneling this music through the Auburn Public Schools. It would all be going through Fame, who would then handle paying ACIS on core tours. So as provided by our tour company, there's actually this wonderful opportunity to have either a long weekend in Paris or a long weekend in London. So, and that would be raffled off, either at like a dinner event or through ticket sales at the concerts. So we're going to work with the boosters to try to figure out what that can be, although some groups have raised over $20,000 with that fundraiser alone. So that's provided by our tour company. The return of our Sing Along with Santa Pancake Breakfast. We will have an all-day rehearse-a-thon for the students, where parents will pledge for their students to rehearse for several hours. Krispy Kreme is always a very, very, very popular one for individual trip accounts. Gift cards at the holidays, again, another popular one right around the holidays. Popcorn, kids love popcorn. There are lots of different sites with great gourmet popcorn, so we're looking at that. Car washes. The tuba toss at football games. We have these tiny little squishy footballs, and we sell them for $2, and at halftime, we do a countdown, and everyone in the audience chuck these little squishy footballs at the sousaphone to see if they can try to get it into the sousaphone bell. Singing Valentines by our Chamber Singers, and also a Snapperies campaign. So we... So we have a lot of fundraisers planned. It's my hope that we can take at least $1,000 to $1,500 off per student's trip. So bringing the cost down to between $2,500 and $3,000. So, which I know is still a big, big ask, but hopefully with some of the individual fundraisers, we can make that even lower. So, and then Encore Tours, it's the Performing Arts Branch of ACIS Educational Travel. And they're a leader in student international travel. They are actually, ACISs who our France and Spain trip use. So they're widely respected for student travel. And there's a little bit more information about that in your packet. Um, one of the nice things about us traveling to Inverness is with our partnership with the local schools, we'll be able to borrow our large instruments, which will save tremendously on needing to either rent instruments or I don't know if you've ever tried to fly a tuba overseas, but it's very, very, very expensive. So we'll be able to borrow all of the big equipment. So we'll only need to bring our flutes, clarinets, saxophones, trumpets, small instruments, which would be considered a personal item. So there won't be overages on the baggage fees either. So that's one of the reasons why we're looking at this particular trip. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have and thank you very much for your consideration.
All right, thank you. That was a great presentation. Uh, do we have any questions for Ms. Bailey?
Question just about nursing coverage, because I noticed that it says school nurse pleads initial. So, um, nurses can't get reciprocity in other, um, countries. So what's the plan if the child has medical needs or do they have to be independent in their medical needs to be able to go? How does that work?
So, um, with our previous trips, we've always had the nurse sign off. They've always let us know of any, you know, medical needs. And I've always had the conversation with the parents and if they need me to give the child medication every day, then we have that conversation. And, you know, so I've had, I've had to hold some medicine for students before and I give it to them, they take the medicine, I take the, the medicine back if there's something secure with that. If there's a significant medical need, then we'd have to just talk with the parents about maybe either them chaperoning or participating in some, some way for that.
Okay, perfect.
But the tour company does have access to all of the medical care in
Oh, awesome.
in the UK as well.
Um, through the chair, just please keep us informed of, um, what's it called, fundraising, so that if we want to participate, we can.
Of course.
Sometimes I feel like we don't hear about it and like, I want to win a trip to Paris or London, so like, throw me some info.
Um, is there a minimum number of students that need to attend?
So right now, our benchmark is 30.
Okay.
So the minimum would be probably 20, but I'm hoping between both the band and chamber, chamber singers, we will be able to hit the 25 to 30 mark. So 30 is what's most cost-effective for us. If we get up to 50, it comes down even lower. So, and the, these prices are actually a little bit older. She revised the, the trip based off of actually reducing the day, so, um, so it's actually more like 4,100.
Okay, so the more kids that go, it lowers the
Correct.
price per student?
Oh, okay. So. Yeah, so this is based kind of on that 30, based off of just the conversation that I had with her earlier.
And this is still leaving on Tuesday, right? Not on Monday?
Correct. So we are leaving on Tuesday of vacation week. And we are traveling to the following Tuesday. The students will be expected to be back in school on Wednesday. So if we need to scooch dates a little bit more, we can to leave on Monday. We opted for the Tuesday just because Sunday is Easter and some of our families would need to celebrate Easter with their families and packing and all of that. So that's why we opted for that. So the students would miss two days of school.
And it's ninth through 12th graders?
Correct.
Grades, okay.
And are you opening it up to kids outside of band and music or?
Um, not really. We, we could to, we could expand to theater, but that's the only place that I would really be comfortable expanding to. Because we want, if we're taking students overseas, we want to have that personal relationship with them. We also want to know that we can trust them. We want them to be invested in the music and theater department. Some of our theater students aren't able to take music courses or don't want to participate in music courses just because of, of other activities that they have going on. But I don't want to penalize some of our strong theater performers who can't participate in chamber singers. So they would be the only other group. So they're still under the music department umbrella.
Yeah.
But not necessarily
Arts.
Correct. So we, but we would not be opening it up to the general population of the school. I'm personally not comfortable taking a student to the UK that I've known for a week or two.
Yeah, yes, true.
Yes.
Um, and then for chaperones, is it one chaperone for 30 or is there like a?
Oh goodness.
What's the ratio?
Um, I believe the, the ratio as outlined in the school committee packet was one to eight. So we would be asking some parents to, to sign on and they would, they would pay the same rate as the students.
Great. Sam?
Yes, please.
Oh, you want go?
I'm going to Cory's house. Just saying.
Ginny, you had a very extensive list of fundraising. Um, I would right out of the gate encourage anyone who's signing up to participate in all of the fundraising. Cause I know a lot of times they decide to wait and then at the last minute, they're trying to raise all their money at the last minute. If they participate going along, it would be beneficial, most beneficial to them, so.
Absolutely. So with approval, then I would meet with Fame and we would come up with a calendar and get that out to the parents along with the trip proposal. So the parents also have the timeline for, for fundraising. And then make sure that I'm not stepping on senior class fundraisers or stepping on junior class fundraisers and, and all of the other fundraising activities that also are happening at the high school. So it's just a matter of getting creative and finding our jigsaw puzzle and making everything work. But as, as someone who needed to fundraise for all of her trips in high school, I, um, I understand it. Also did the last-minute scramble, much to my mother's dismay.
Through the chair, what is a SNAP campaign? The last one on that list.
Sure. So Snap Raise is, it's what a lot of organizations are moving towards. It's a donation-based campaign. So you sign up through the website. They don't really take a cut, but then parents can send it to Uncle Billy, who lives in California. And he can pledge $25 to the Auburn Band and you receive the donation that way. So instead of needing to buy a product, you're just saying, here's my credit card. I do it for my nieces all the time. They have this campaign, that campaign, this campaign, that campaign. So it's, it's a donation-based
Great, yeah.
fundraiser platform.
That's nice in case people
Designed specifically for music and athletic groups.
And one more thing through this here. Ginny, I'm assuming you've, you've reviewed the new policy, right? On all the travel and all the requirements and all of that.
Yes, of course. So we opted for the UK. Just with everything happening in Europe, we felt that, that this is a safer place. Um, on a personal note, my sister does live in Scotland, so there is a local person in Scotland. Should we have a need for transportation or need for extra connections? So she's lived there since 2008. So she knows the locals, she knows the community. So when we were talking with Encore Tours, George Eisenhower, my choral colleague, lived in Germany for a number of years. And so when we were speaking with Robin, she said, do you have any personal connections in Europe that can help bring the trip cost down? And so Germany didn't seem like the safest place for us to go, but I said, I know someone in Scotland. So, and she's, uh, very involved with the music scene and she will also help me connect with those schools and, and organizations. So it's, it is helpful to know that there are people there that, you know, should there be some kind of emergency or some kind of thing, or just even to run to Tesco and grab a couple of cases of chips and a couple of cases of water for tired, hungry kids on a bus, that we have access to someone with a vehicle that can, can get those things for us. And knows how to navigate the healthcare system beyond just the tour guide who, who might need to stay with the groups, so.
I think the only other thing that we've brought up in the case of another one, just the, the other trips, is just to make sure that folks understand from the get-go that should something change in Europe, right? So
Of course.
was it two years ago, Paris went through a really rough time with some things happening. Uh, and there were trips that had to be canceled that families know upfront that, you know, the school committee reserves the right to say, it's just not going to happen if, if in any way we thought there was a safety issue for anyone.
Of course, of course. And I think that that with the travel protection built into this, that would help cover that. But I'll, I'll definitely make sure that I, I check in with, with Encore to just remind them of that and just be very upfront with the parents. I understand completely. So it's a changing world all the time.
It's a changing world.
All right. Any more questions or comments?
I think
Through the chair, lunch, they would have to, they're going to be on their own for lunch.
Correct.
Well, not on their own, but financially. Peanut butter and jelly.
It's not like New York, you can't just go get a, a haggis from a streetcar.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but we'll make sure that we build in time for them to, to get lunch, either at the cafes, at one of the castles. All of the, all of the big, like tourist attractions have little cafes and they're actually quite affordable. And like I said, just especially up in the Inverness area, just being able to run to Tesco, which if you've never been to Tesco, it's, it's an experience. It makes Super Walmart look team.
Scary.
Everything. But it's wonderful, it's wonderful. So.
Well, it looks like an amazing trip. We were already arguing over who could go and as chaperones, but, um,
I'm the oldest, so.
Yeah. Um, no, it looks good. I think if we have no more questions or comments, we can take it to a vote. And is everyone ready to vote on this?
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay, go for it.
Make a motion to approve the Auburn High School Concert Band and Chamber Singers Performance Trip to Edinburgh, Inverness, UK, April 22 to, of 2025 through April 30th of 2025.
A second?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your support.
Yes, good luck. And we want to, we want a student spotlight on that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, when you come back.
With snacks.
Livestream our concerts.
Oh, really?
Nice.
There is a five-hour time difference, so if we're performing at 7:00 PM, it may be 2:00 PM, but it will be recorded so that families can
Well, that's awesome.
Please keep us posted on that.
Yeah.
That'll be awesome.
We'll put together quite the
Oh, great, great. All right.
Nice presentation.
Thank you. Okay, move on to the next field check.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item on the agenda is the Auburn High School STN Conference Trip to Tampa, Florida.
Have a good night.
Hi, have a good night. In your packet, you'll find a request from Steve Scott, uh, from Auburn High School to take a group of Auburn High School students to the Student Television Network Conference in Tampa Bay, Florida. You have details in your packet and Mr. Scott is here to answer any questions you may have.
Move things around a little bit. Good evening. Um, I'm Steve Scott and this is the first time I've had, well, second time, because I actually was introduced last, let's see.
In September?
Two, September, uh, two years ago.
Yep.
Um, and I got a chance to shake your hand. So, um, I want to thank you for allowing me to come in, in front of you, um, to be able to, uh, present, uh, this STN conference. I wanted to talk a little bit though first, if you would allow me, because the person who you just saw up here, Chris Hugo. Chris Hugo is an invaluable part of what we do, um, at our school. Um, he has been, uh, someone who I've talked to constantly, um, has been a, a help on some, some of the technical sides of things. And I think cable access in the town of Auburn really has someone who goes above and beyond uh, what, um, he is, he is expected to do. He, uh, loves what he does and, uh, he wants to help, uh, our students become the best they can, um, do that. Um, I also wanted to let you know that we elected our officers, um, for, uh, AHSTV, which is now what we're called, Auburn High School Television. Um, we're not the Broadcasting Club, which is what we were before. Um, we're now AHSTV. Uh, Brianna Landry and AJ Beaman-Durfer will be our co-presidents. Um, one will be in charge of production. The other one will be in charge of on-air talent. Um, then we have Ireland Malpass and Ainsley Whitmore. Uh, Ireland will be in charge of production as well as a vice president. And Ainsley will be in charge of our social media campaign, uh, as a vice president. And then we have Bill Figrus, who will be our secretary. Um, we still have a treasurer that we will allow to select when, uh, the, the next group comes in, in the fall of next year. And just as an overview, I took over two years ago. Um, and, um, I think one of the things that I had a challenge of was to look at how, what our video production broadcasting program was, how we could develop it, how we could make it a program that Auburn could be very proud of. Um, and I think in this, in the short time that we've been doing this, and I say we, because it's not just me, it's the students, it's the, the faculty, it's everybody involved in Auburn High School and the town of Auburn. Um, to begin this program and develop it. Um, we now have television one, television broadcasting, a new course called Sports Broadcasting and Communication. Um, those three, those three program, uh, courses are part of a full program that we wanted to, to develop. Um, and as I said, now we have AHSTV, though we revitalized the, um, the control room and the studio, which, um, when I got there was a little bit cluttered, to put it mildly.
Multiply that a thousand times.
So we now have a 16 editing station within this, within the studio itself, uh, around the outside of the studio. We are now in the process of, we tore down some green screens that were just not acceptable for what we wanted to do. We are now in the process of, uh, beginning the process of building a brand-new green screen that will be wider, taller and curved, because green screens need to be curved. They can't have sharp edges because of lighting. Uh, we've upgraded systems in the studio, again, thanks to Chris, our tricaster and our sound systems. Um, and we're working on our lighting grid to develop it with our green screen. Um, we've developed two studio shows called Rocket Minute, if you haven't seen it, and Rocket Fuel Daily. Um, those shows are part of our program. Rocket Minute is part of our sports broadcasting program and Rocket Fuel Daily is part of our television broadcasting program. They are also working on shows right now that we will be releasing, um, at the end of the year, um, on different, um, stories within Auburn. And one exciting thing is graduation this year. We actually produced that from the control room. So if you have, you've been to Auburn High School and you've seen Auburn High School, the control room is nowhere near the gymnasium. We have been able to install Huddle Cameras, which is used by our, uh, athletic program. Um, but we also used it for graduation. We took that feed in, we had video feed, uh, in on the gymnasium, brought that in. Chris, again, I can't tell, tell you how much he has helped immensely with this. But we brought that into our studio and we were talking to our camera people in the gym over our wireless headsets, um, to be able to make sure that we were getting the feed. And the feed was, was, was great. Graduation is, was tremendous. We have over 750 views on our YouTube channel for that graduation right now. Um, and I'll talk about our YouTube channel in a second. Um, and, um, I think one of the other things, uh, that we've done is, is games and concerts and other things that we continue to produce and want to get better at. Those things don't happen overnight. Those things take time to implement and produce, and I think we're getting better at it, um, as the kids get better at it. Um, we're also in the process of looking at how we're going to utilize a mobile studio, um, that we have in conjunction, I believe, with the fire department. There's a mobile studio that we can use to livestream and go places to livestream important events, important games or things along that line. So our livestream program, um, we have a YouTube channel and I think, uh, yesterday, when I threw out a post on Facebook, and if you're part of the Auburn, one of the Auburn, uh, Facebook pages, I threw out a post, I said, we have a challenge for you. We have 382 subscribers to our YouTube channel. By the end of the year, academic year, we want 500. So far, right now, we're up to 415.
Is it on our YouTube, is it on our Facebook page?
I don't know if it's on your Facebook page.
Send it to me and we'll put it up.
We'll put it up. Um, so we are, we are trying to increase that. Subscribers are a real big part of what we gauge as engagement within our, within our program and outside the community. So having 500 subscribers in a year, that's, that's saying something in, in our world anyways. Um, so right now, we, we're at 415.
Well, I think you can add five. I mean, at least this committee will probably subscribe.
Well, definitely do that. You're going to get our content, um, as it, as it comes out. So that brings us to STN. This is really why I'm here. STN is a national organization. We actually belong to it. Um, and I brought it from my old school. I came to you from Worcester Academy where I taught for 30 years. Um, I developed our broadcasting program there. Um, STN is an organization, um, that I think is invaluable to helping to promote broadcasting, broadcast journalism, and even film, which is something I would love to bring to Auburn, um, the ability to have film, um, to there. I'm going to now show something that I want to, you to see, and I should have showed it a couple of minutes ago when I talked about Rocket Minute. But, uh, Chris, can you roll that Rocket Minute footage?
Right here at the media player?
Yeah. I'll let you do it, because I'm a Mac guy. So.
There we go.
I have my Windows kind of. I have my Windows kind of freaks me out. Twenty seconds long. And it's a little twenty-two seconds, so.
I'm your host, Brielle Nelson, and today we will be recapping the games from Monday, May the thirteenth. The baseball team had an extremely close game with the Oxford Pirates, but the Rockets were able to pull through and get the win with a score of three to two. Cam McLaughlin singled twice, and Kyle McLaughlin and Matt Griesen.
And everybody in our sports broadcasting community, uh, program hosts a show and has to produce it. And we have about ten kids working on the show at one time.
Counterparts, they lost with a score of six to five. Kaylee Papier-Ski had two RBIs in the run. Kaylee Charlton had two runs. Ireland Melpass had a homerun. And Emily Dorvold, Fan Twelve. Their next game will be Thursday the seventeenth against Notre Dame at home at three-thirty. Kaylee Papier-Ski has been nominated for Hometown Softball Player of the Week. This went three for five. She went three for five with six RBIs.
And again, of course, you have some technical issues when you're working with these.
Over Valley Tech. She currently leads the team with six-hundred-and-fifty-three.
No, but that's her.
Thirty-two hits, three home runs, and twenty-six RBIs. She's currently sixth in voting, so please log in to.
We should have some other graphics that are up here, but.
Girls across were defeated by.
And there we go, right?
Tintasco with a score of eleven-six. Jenna Witsa had a hat trick, and Kayla Simpson scored two goals. Their next game will be on Thursday the sixteenth at Auburn at three-thirty against Notre Dame.
Come back up. I think we caught something in.
Had an incredible win over.
This was all done in one recording.
Beating them twenty-six to ten.
She did, she did it without.
Bershaw a thirty, and Cecilia Shannon.
It was the only one we did where it was one hit.
Match will be on Friday, May tenth at three-thirty against Qualbent at the Quail Hollow Golf Course. Boys tennis came back from their loss against Marlborough to redeem themselves by winning five-zero against Oxford. They will next play against Sutton at three-thirty and will be traveling to the Sutton Tennis Courts. The girls tennis team had a phenomenal senior night with everyone playing on their A-game, it'd be Oxford five-zero. The next match will be today against Sutton at three-thirty on their home courts. Before we send you on your way, we would like to inform you about Mateo Padilla. Mateo is a freshman here at AHS and played varsity soccer for Auburn. Sadly, Mateo was recently diagnosed with leukemia. Cancer is a horrible disease that plagues many people today, and we want Mateo to know that we are wishing him a speedy and safe recovery so that we can see him out on the soccer fields next season. You can support Mateo by posting your best moment in your sport on social media and using the hashtag #movesMateo. This has been Your Rocket Minute, and this is Brielle Nelson signing off.
He had her up in my school.
She was relieved that it was done. I mean, it's a, it's a process. It takes us all period to put that together, and we try to do it every period. Um, with somebody having that, that job. Their job is to scour what we have on the MIA website, Telegram and Gazette, our arbiter website, and try to pull in all that information, then they're talking to, talking to their students, their, um, fellow teammates or whatever, and trying to get all that information, so. So I wanted to see, that's really what we, what we try to do, and this is why STN becomes something that is really, really important for us. Um, I think it's an opportunity for us, um, to really go and see other schools that are doing it, uh, be part of that, um, uh, group, but there's a lot more to it. Four guiding principles: community, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking. Those are the hallmarks of what STN stands for. So when you think about what STN does, is it really forces you to become a broadcaster. Um, we've done some contests already in STN, it's sixty-second Horror Fest, uh, contest, where we had two students, uh, two groups of students, um, submit, um, films. Um, they didn't win, but just the experience of submitting the film and getting critiqued was, was invaluable. The STN challenge, that is constantly happening in the fall and spring nationals that we compete in. So the convention runs from March fourth, first to the fourth, which is in Tampa, Florida. Everybody is, um, if anybody has a question, stop me, ask me. I'm perfectly fine to answer any questions, uh, when you get there. Um, the contests, uh, we're going to compete against schools across the country. These are contests that are, have prompts with them. So STN gives you a prompt and says you need to complete this. You have a timeframe, just like a deadline for a news show, just like a deadline from somewhere else. You now have six hours, eight hours, whatever that timeframe is, to produce that. You're working in teams of four. Okay, um, so we are working to identify who those teams of four will be. Uh, because as Jenny says, I don't want to take anybody down there. I want to take students who are interested, who are going to work hard, and who are invested in the program to be able to do that. So you have to have taken television broadcasting, um, Television One, have those basics behind you, or also, um, work with AHSTV as part of that. So you have to have some skills behind there. Um, and you're going to compete in that. There are going to be speakers there. Um, that's another part of it. So contests is one, speakers is another part. There are industry professionals and leaders within organizations who will have uh, time for you to go and see them speak about an industry, about something that you may be interested in. Um, there will be college professionals as well, so teachers who are doing it at the college level. You have a chance to talk to them and pick their brain as well. Uh, there will be a college fair. So STN is, is supported by many, many different colleges, such as Syracuse University, one of the top broadcasting programs in the country. Um, you have, uh, Ithaca College as well, Temple University, Arizona State University, Missouri School of Journalism, and, uh, New York Film Academy. Um, so that's just some of them that will be there, uh, for your college fair. There will also be an expo market, so you will be able to look at what is new and interesting coming out. And in our world, what you're doing today, tomorrow, might be obsolete. So you have to be aware of what's going, what's coming down the road, what's, what's new and, 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 uh, going to change your way. So our itinerary actually is from February twenty-eighth to March fifth. We would leave February twenty-eighth in the afternoon after school, um, so we wouldn't miss school on Friday. The conference runs from that Saturday to Tuesday. Um, and I don't know about you, but I would probably be a comatose on Wednesday if I came back on a red eye. Um, to, or not a red, well, that was when we were going potentially out to California. We're not going there until two years from now. Um, but, uh, we, just coming back after all that time, I don't know if we'd be able to come back, uh, Tuesday night. Um, we'd rather come back Wednesday and allow the kids a chance to reflect. This is not a vacation. This is work. They're going to be working hard. Um, they're going to be seeing an awful lot, um, and executing that, so it's not just, uh, going out to just see things. They're going to be doing things. So I want to give them just a chance to recover. The costs of that fundraising trip, or the trip itself, and, um, I have it based on sixteen students, so it's basically four teams that we would take down, um, of students. Um, two chaperones, so eighteen people going on, on it, the trip. Uh, roughly, um, the cost of an airline ticket to Tampa is about three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Um, the convention fee itself is a hundred-and-fifty dollars per person. Um, then the, the cost of competing in the conventions, it's two-hundred dollars per contest. We would do four. I think I had three there. We're going to do four. And then, uh, the transportation to and from the airport, uh, AA Transportation is roughly about fifteen-hundred dollars to and from. So taking us there and coming back. Um, and then our hotel rooms are roughly about two-hundred-and-eighty dollars for the stay. Um, and then two-hundred dollars for food. That brings us to a grand total of sixteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Um, it's about one-thousand dollars per student, which, for what I think they're getting, and I've done trips, um, for a long time. I used to do a Habitat for Humanity trip for nine, ten years. Actually, no, yeah, ten years. Um, and I also did baseball trips, so I've taken kids to different places, and, uh, for, for a thousand dollars, uh, to go on a trip, that's nothing, but I'm only going to charge them seven-hundred. And the reason, we could, I think we could fundraise the entire trip. I really do, with what, what I have planned in terms of fundraising, but I don't want them to not have skin in the game. I want them to have something that they, they will, will say, "Yeah, we paid for this." Even though they're going to fundraise for it, I want them to still have that, that they're going to be paying for that, and they're not going to just say, you know, "We're, we've, we've done it all, fundraised, that we didn't have anything, anything left." I know that one of the things would be, what would be our minimum number? Um, I had done some costs for eight students. Um, and, um, that cost, really, the fundraising amount, what we would need to fundraise is about fifty-one-hundred dollars for sixteen. For eight students, it's forty-six-hundred dollars. So the cost is not that much different. Um, because really, you're absorbing, uh, an awful lot within the eight to sixteen. You're only absorbing two chaperones. If you had more chaperones, you'd be absorbing more costs. Um, I feel that chaperones do an awful lot, and I don't, never, ever charge my chaperones to go on a trip. I don't think you should charge them to go on a trip, because they are responsible for the students and doing an awful lot. That's just my personal opinion.
Question?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, is that okay?
Yes.
Um, the transportation, so is the hotel going to be right nearby the convention center so that it won't have to be daily transportation? So that's, okay, that's great.
Yep. Um, so.
Sorry, I have a question as well. Is the, um, is the whole event held in one building, or are the kids going to be going from building to building?
Yeah, it's held in one big convention center.
Okay.
Okay, um, and the convention center, well, you will have your thing. Now, would we leave the convention center to go do a story? Yes. Okay, so that would be something that the kids would wind up doing, to go do a story. Um, they might.
With some, with someone.
What's that?
With someone.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it was always a chaperone.
All right.
That would go with them. Um, we wouldn't allow them to go off.
That is, if you have three groups and two chaperones, is that what you were thinking, right? Because you're saying you might have three groups of kids, so will two chaperones be enough? If you have three groups.
I mean, I could add more chaperones if need be, and we could definitely do that.
I only say if they're going to be going off, right? They might not necessarily be doing the same type of story.
Well, we're probably not going to have them be competing at the same time.
Gotcha.
Okay, so there are, there are contests that happen throughout the course of that weekend. So they would be competing, so one, one would be working on one, one would be working on the other. The other two may not be competing. They may be preparing, but they're not competing for it, okay? So not, doesn't necessarily mean that we, but they would be going to college fair. They would be going to speakers. They would go to ex, the expo marketplace to kind of take a look at all of that, that they, they have to offer.
I'll go through the chair, if you don't mind. Um, is there anything about, like, travel insurance, trip insurance, in case something occurs?
Now, I would be doing this all on my own in terms of organizing this, which I've done in the past. Um, if we wanted to do that with trip insurance, the price almost goes up by about twenty-five percent. Because now you're going and you're asking somebody else to do all the work. Now, trip insurance, and I get it, we're, we're leaving in March. My son was born in nineteen-ninety-seven on March thirtieth. I don't know if you remember what might have happened on March thirtieth and April first, nineteen-ninety-seven? But that storm was quite intense, so I know we get storms that potentially could happen.
And, and, yeah, and you understand, we've been through this with a couple of trips, right? That it's, it's, so people have to be prepared. Families have to know that that's.
And, and I would be very upfront with them, let them know. The only thing that we would have very little control over doing it this way would be the airline tickets. Because the airline tickets, you have to pay upfront, um, you have to pay by a certain date, um, to get that. Now, if, if the flight was canceled, we would be put on standby to be able to get out at some point in time, uh, to be able to, to do that. But that's just one of the things.
Could families purchase their own insurance?
They could definitely purchase their own insurance for the flight.
And I would say, um, you mentioned you, you could have enough fundraising to pay for the entire thing, um, but you do want the kids to pay for some. If there is a kid who is struggling with money, then.
Yeah, we, at my old school, we used to have a serendipity fund.
All right.
And that serendipity fund was fun to use for students who might not be able to cover the costs of certain things. So they could then come to someone like me and say, "Okay, yeah, this is what's going on." And then we would be able to deal with them on a very, very.
Yeah.
Quiet basis.
Yeah, great.
I have one more question, too. Sorry.
Yeah, no, go for it.
Go ahead.
So the security guard, so a lot of times that has to do with when you're using, like, a tour company, right?
Right.
So how does that work?
They have their own security guards, um, that STN uses. It's part of what they, what they use.
Oh, that STN uses.
STN uses.
Gotcha. So that's through the conference itself, not through the hotel?
Right.
Gotcha.
And then the four students per room, does that mean two kids in a bed each?
Yeah, I don't.
I think there've been other trips.
I mean, that's, I, I mean, two double beds, four students to a room, that's generally what I have always had in terms of.
Yeah, we're just finding that there are a lot of changes with kids now, right? With kids with different identities, different needs, different insecurities, or whatever you want to call them. That's probably not the right word to use. Um, but that is a consideration, uh, and one that became troublesome, I think, at the middle school when they talked about, uh, their trip. They used to go away, and that, that, um, trip went away because of some of the complexities with putting kids together that may not necessarily.
If there was a situation that we would need to have an extra room, we would do that.
I'm wondering, maybe through the chair, giving them that option?
Yeah.
You know, a little more money for a double versus a quadruple or something, I don't know. I also have another question through the chair. I don't know if we've gotten to the itinerary yet. The Tuesday, three, four. Um.
Yep.
I just see a lot of time in between breakfast and closing ceremony. Um, we have wonderful students, I know that, but, um, are they going to have things to do during that time so that they're not?
Yeah, there will be other, um, options for them to be able to do.
Okay.
Um, go back to, to the, the college fair. They won't be left alone.
Okay.
So that still is, uh, available for them to be able.
Okay.
To be able to do.
Yeah, because sometimes on those closing days, there isn't a whole lot going on.
Yep.
So if there isn't, I would consider making it a return on that Tuesday, if there isn't a lot going on during the day.
Well, the only thing would be that if you're competing, and the closing ceremony is where everybody gets recognized for competing, you really don't want to leave until that, you know.
Yeah.
Is, is done.
Yeah, you want to be there for that.
Yeah.
Sometimes the closing ceremony is just another speaker.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, this closing ceremony is actually pretty well-done.
Yeah.
Um, and there's a red carpet that you wind up going down, and there's the formal dress, potentially, it could be something that you have as well, um, as part of that.
I mean, I think it looks like an amazing trip. Um, the kids would benefit greatly from this. My, seriously, my only hangup is the four kids per room.
Yeah.
Um, I don't like it. I don't feel comfortable with that at all, so if we could figure out a way to get it down to two kids per room and figure out fundraising from there, um.
We could definitely wind up doing something where, where we do two kids per room. It's just going to add to the cost, and then we'll just figure it out from there.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that's going to add. I, I don't have.
I think it may save a lot of angst.
With that.
Yeah, complexity.
Yeah, to do it that way.
I do, I agree.
Um, I mean, I, I, yeah, I've, we had to take kids down to Miami for a Habitat trip, and we wound up, uh, getting, getting put into a room, and, um, I think I had five, five boys in one room. My son was one of them. Um, so, um, and they, they worked it out. So I agree with you. I mean, we can definitely do something that's, that's going to help everybody, in particular, uh, students who have, might have some concerns. Um, I wanted to get to the sponsorships that we had, um, some of the fundraising, um, avenues. So we call them sponsorships, and we don't call them advertising, because sponsorships allow for businesses to, um, I think, not have to, um, declare as an advertiser as a business. It's, it's almost like a donation. So it's a different, different, um, tier that they wind up doing, uh, with that. So, um, we would have a number of different, uh, sponsorships, and I don't know if you had printed out the flyer brochure?
I don't think I saw it. Did you send it to me?
Um, yes, I did. Remember, you'd see, uh.
Sorry.
So we'll get it, we'll get that to you. That's right.
Um, okay, I think, I think there was some talk in the committee about how we do that for some other things as far as, like, vouchers and stuff.
Basically, we would do title, a title sponsor. We would charge a business for that season, and they would title sponsor every livestream that we do. Then you have in-game sponsorships, like we might have somebody sponsor, you know, the tip-off of the boy, of the basketball game, or the puck drop, or, you know, the, the. Or the puck drop or, you know, the the uh, the keys to the game. So those are, that's all part of our production that we want to capitalize on um, and have that be sponsored by someone.
I think that's a great idea. Um, I know our drama club does something similar with their playbill that they come out with. So, yeah, I mean, I think like you you've been very thorough and this is, it was a great presentation.
Yeah, I'm ready to vote.
Are you?
Yeah.
All right, I think.
I'm right there with you.
Why don't we take this to a vote?
Nobody has any other questions?
I mean, do you want to take a little sixth grader? Because I can see my son loving this trip.
Um, I would take the sixth grader when he got to be ninth grade.
Yeah.
Yes.
It is Chris Hugo going with you because I think he would enjoy it too.
Oh, I'll put it this way, when I was going out to California, there was a lot of people who wanted to go.
Yeah.
Um, just like a lot of people want to go to Europe, I think they want to go to Tampa too, so.
Yeah, I think you'll get a good crowd.
Yeah, you know, the kids have been super, super great um, in what they've done and welcoming me. And I can't say, and I said this to Dan this morning, I was had in a meeting with him. And I said, you know, I'm coming from a school thirty thirty years of experience. And what Auburn has allowed me to do is kind of reinvigorate myself. And I could not be more appreciative of that. This late stage in my career with uh, you know, maybe ten more years left to go. But.
I think you're reinvigorating the whole program, honestly. So I mean, you've made great changes already and these ideas are awesome. So, yeah, I think we'll just take it to a vote.
With the room changes.
With the room.
Yes. Do we need to put that in the motion?
Probably.
Okay. So I'll seek a motion to approve the Auburn High School students to attend the Student Television Network Conference in Tampa Bay, Florida. February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five through March fifth, twenty twenty five. With.
With the caveat that there would be two students.
Thank you. Yeah, with the caveat that there would be two students per room.
I'll second that. Or first that, I don't know.
First that.
First that, I will make that motion.
I will second that motion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it is a vote. I think you have a lot of happy broadcasting kids right now.
Thank you, Steve.
Best of luck. Thank you so much for all you do.
Have a good night.
Um, all right, we will move on to announcement of retirees. I think Cecilia, we fall into this category.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You will see uh, below a list of the retirees from the Auburn Public Schools at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We thank them for their support and dedication to the Auburn Public Schools. Carol Bose, Michelle Carpenter, Beth Cooksey, Annette Lemeries, Cheryl Moran, Kim Riley, Diane Sad.
You too, thanks so much.
Fiona Vecio, and of course Cecilia Worsbicky. So uh, you add that all up, that's a whole lot of years to service to our students and to our families. And we are more than appreciative of all that we've done and we wish them, you know, wonderful time on the next adventure.
Yeah.
To retire us, so.
Through the chair, Mrs. Bose was my uh, third grade teacher, her first year teaching, I think. Back to date myself. And I had Ms. Lemeries.
I think uh, Mrs. Bose's entire career was here in Auburn.
Yes, I mean, so.
Yeah, she was wonderful. So uh, and along with that, the next item, um, and we can do this at the uh, end of the meeting. That we have letters that have been prepared for the signature of the committee members to go to all staff members retiring at the end of the year to offer our appreciation for their dedicated service. So if we could uh, take action on that.
Okay, I'll seek a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to thank the twenty twenty-four retirees for their many years of service and to sign and distribute the letters to retirees. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it is a vote.
Thank you. The next item in your packet are the twenty-four, twenty-five school committee meeting dates. We have looked through these, we've tried to be careful around certain holidays, those type of things. We looked back again at our budget process, hoping that these dates will meet our needs for that. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or concerns about any of the dates.
Nope.
Anything?
Nope. Be checked. Appreciate it.
March nineteenth, I can't make it, but from that I can do all those others, so. Yeah, it looks good to me.
Definitely, works for me.
Yeah.
I'll be here.
All right, great. Uh, you need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended dates for school committee meetings in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is about a community eligibility provision, um, which comes through us through DESI as well as through the federal government. So what we have found out recently is that this is is uh, a district is designated as being a community eligible provision. And what that means is um, is that we would no longer have families who might want to fill out um, free and reduced lunch forms. That we would automatically know that our kids were going to get free lunch and breakfast. And the way this came upon is that previously, the percentage of uh, low income families in the community had to be forty percent or above. Well, they've lowered that to twenty-five percent.
Okay.
And I think that's in response to the fact that the state moved to universal free meals. By lowering this percentage, we will be eligible for a greater amount of federal funding to offset the cost of the universal free meals. And we quite frankly, don't have a choice. Um, Ms. Pulver, our Director of Food Services, is in the process of completing the application uh, for this. And uh, as of July first, we will be in this designation. It will help us, and we're still finding out a lot about this, there are some uh, webinars happening. But seemingly it's going to help us with our E-rate, which when we buy a new switch or the amount we pay for internet, that gets subsidized. So right now, we're subsidized as a fifty percent rate. This may boost the rate that we get subsidized for that because we're designated as having a higher level of uh, low income families in the community. Um, so there's more to come on that. I did include um, a flyer in here for you. That reflects some of that, but it it. It will impact some of the things that we can collect funding for, um, for instance, uh, bus transportation. So we're going to have to be very careful to, we will now get a list from the state. They call it being directly certified. So if you qualify for mass health, uh, if you get SNAP benefits, if you are registered through the Department of Transitional Assistance. And there's one more organization, I'm not going to remember the acronym for. If you are affiliated with any of those and getting services through those, you tend to be direct certified. And then what we get is a list from the state to say, these are the kids that are in these households that should that qualify. Um, so that's something that we'll have to be looking at. And that's kind of been half in process for a while, that we've gotten some direct certified and others that families fill out the application. So this will be, we will be in this, in this category for the next four years. And then toward the end of the four years, they reassess, they'll look again at our community, they'll look again at those numbers to see if we still qualify for that.
Through the chair, where we have direct certified students, is that like, so they won't possibly like pay for the bus?
Correct.
Okay.
Just curious. Now, it depends on when that happens. So we could potentially collect a bus fee from someone and find out later that they're.
Direct.
Direct certified, so we have to work all of that out. And again, that's what some of these webinars are for. Um, but we we have looked at the list that we have now to compare to see what that would do for us related just to the bus transportation. And we will take, you know, a decrease in some of the funds we're bringing in, but it's not going to be significant enough that it's going to be any, anything we can't figure out a way around.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Sounds like they're over complicating things first. Okay.
So, and we're learning more and more about it because I had a question about um, mass health. So just because somebody qualifies for mass health, doesn't necessarily mean that they're considered low income.
Right.
Right, because there are other ways you qualify for mass health. However, they all come in on this list as being directly certified, so we have to include them in that count. So we're learning some of the ins and outs about it, so there'll be more information coming to everyone about that. Um, but we will not be distributing um, those applications anymore.
Okay.
For families to fill out.
Okay. Alrighty.
Okay, the next item are my goals for next school year. Uh, I am not bringing forward goals today, um, but asking for your input. I will tell you that for the principals and the leadership team, the items that we are looking at for their goals stayed the same from this year to next. Where we're talking about making sure that we're looking at data and making response and responding to students um, accordingly to make sure that kids are making the progress they need, getting the support they need and getting the extension that they need. I'm asking them to continue their emphasis on the implementation of universal design for learning, restorative practices and cultural competency. Um, we're bringing in some uh, facilitators to help us do some of that as well. So these are just some of the suggestions that I'm thinking of listed here that are carried out in what the, I'm asking the principals to do as well. I don't think there's any big need for sweeping changes because, right? If you want to get a ball rolling, you got to keep pushing at it.
Pushing at it, yeah.
You know? Um, but I look for you um, to the committee for any suggestions about what you might want to see included in my goals. And I will present those at the first meeting of the uh, of the next school year.
Any feedback?
Through the chair, with having a new principal, should there be something about supporting new leadership or is that separate?
Yeah, so what I, what we normally do, and and obviously there's a lot of support that goes along with that, I can certainly write it in there. But what I will also do is connect her with another principal.
Okay.
Who will serve as her mentor.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, good.
Great. All right, any other questions?
No.
Just keep on keeping on, I think that's.
All right.
Yeah.
That's good. Uh, the next item is just for information only. It's the FY twenty-five AVC tuition, service and transportation rates. Um, these were approved at the AVC Board of Directors meeting on March twenty-second and April twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-four. So this is a typical thing that we share out with all of you. AVC has been working very hard to get better transportation contracts and that kind of thing. Transportation has become the bane of everyone's existence when it comes to um, needing it for certain kids for out of district placement and that kind of thing. But AVC has worked very hard to get a really good um, contract in place and we're a part of that, so.
Great. Alrighty.
Uh, the next item is uh, a brief summary of school year transitions. As we end the school year, and I have a little bit of information for when we start the school year. Um, but I know in the past that we've had a lot of um, conversations about making sure that our kids get supported appropriately through transitions. And I want to begin by saying that each of the principals have said that this is a, this is a minor list. They have lots of families that reach out to them and want to come in and sometimes come in multiple times over the course of a summer to get their child prepared for school. And we are going to continue offering that to families whenever they need that, um, because we want kids to be comfortable. You know, leaving in the in the in the summertime and coming back in the fall. So you'll see that some of the activities for incoming freshmen have been, um, you know, they have the eighth grade family night. The counselors have come to um, Auburn Middle School to talk to eighth graders about course selection. There's a step up day this month. Um, they get to come in whenever they need to. And then in August, they'll have a scheduled pickup and a freshman orientation. And they're looking to enhance that a little bit. They did do a survey of freshmen with what they needed and they were looking for a bit more information, maybe a map of the school. That was a big thing for freshmen is feeling like they were going to get lost. So those are some of the things that will be enhanced in the freshman process um, for, for the coming uh, coming year as well. Um, at middle school, similarly, right, Guidance and Special Education, they've they've done multiple um, small group trips with kids from Swanson Road that are coming to a middle school. That's one of our most complicated transitions, I think, from elementary to middle. Um, so uh, Jamie Nacopoulos is one of our small bus drivers. So she takes the bus, picks the kids up and brings them over, so they do that regularly. The music staff went to grade five to review that. We had um, we'll we'll be having grade five step up day. Mr. Desto provides a newsletter to new families. And then again, in August, they have pickup orientation. And again, there are multiple uh, tours of the building throughout the summer. Swanson Road, uh, grade two has gone to Swiss in April. Uh, they'll have step up day now in June. And then again in fall, that was very popular based on the survey that I did was the Know Your School Night, which will happen, not that very first week, where we only have two days of school, but that following week where families will come in with the kids. And then Pakichog and Brynmar, they've had kindergarten screening, they've had a spring into kindergarten day. Again, they'll have step up day in June. Uh, in August, they have an incoming family information night for new uh, kindergarten families. And we're in conversations now about how we're going to um, structure the open house at the primary level. So that something does happen right before school starts. So we're working out the details of that now. Um, so kids will be able to come into the buildings. And at least see what's going on. But we don't have the details on all that yet, but that's in process.
Great. And I, through the chair, I will say that I've heard from a couple of parents, they're very pleased um, that like kids, it's Swiss that are on IUPs. Like they're saying like, we will set up a time with you to walk through the building. And that's wonderful. I think that makes kids especially, those kids that like might have different classes than their peers, like really understand the school. So that's really great. Through the chair, thank you so much for reading back the step up day. I know it's a lot of work and I appreciate it. And I think a lot of families will too.
Yeah.
Swiss is going, fifth grade's going tomorrow, I think.
Oh, good. Yeah, I think they. Earlier than everybody else, yeah.
That they're going tomorrow.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Okay. And then again, I won't go through all of these, but just bringing us back to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I just highlighted some of the uh, the dates of some of the breaks. That calendar is available on our website. We're in the process of building a new district event calendar, which will have, again, all of the events going on that families can easily access to see what's happening. Uh, and trying to be um, as communicative, communicative as we can about what's going on in the buildings. There is just so much happening all the time, particularly this time of year, so um, we will continue to do so.
Great.
Uh, just as a reminder, the twenty twenty-four MASC, MAS joint conference will be held down in Hyannis, November sixth through November eighth. Um, we have not gotten the early bird registration, which we have often had at this point. Um, but we don't have it yet. Uh, Mandy and I went on, got the dates um, for that, but I wanted to put it out to the committee. So if you are interested in attending, please let her know. And then we can make sure that once the registration comes in, we can get that in.
All right, great, yeah, make sure you try and carve out time to go. It is great.
It's wonderful. Sign me up, Mandy.
Mandy, I'll be on the list.
I'll be there too. I'd like to try to go. It's good, it's good.
Um, all right, great. We will, let's move, oh, we don't have Alan here tonight.
We don't have Alan here tonight, so just very quickly, uh, in your packet, you have uh, the class of twenty twenty-four college and university acceptances. It is a tremendously long list.
Very impressive.
Um, with some amazing prestigious uh, universities and colleges. And we also have um, two students enlisting in the United States Army and one in the Marines, all active duty. So yes, they were recognized at graduation, so that was great.
They do that. Which, by the way, graduation was incredible always, so.
Yeah, it was lovely. Hats off to those high school teachers. They do a great job planning that.
It was, it was fabulous.
So great. Uh, and then as we do each year, there'll be some summer curriculum work being done. Uh, Mr. Keller's in the process of collecting proposals now and he'll be notifying teachers of um, what we can fund and how we can make that work. Uh, we're really trying to focus our efforts on principles of universal design for learning. Uh, we do some things like investigating history, which he spoke to you about, which is the the social studies uh, curriculum. So some teachers will be doing some work on that, I think at grade five and grade seven, I want to say, maybe grade eight. Um, so there are some variety of things that we'll report on at the end of the summer. Uh, and likewise, we are full steam ahead for ESY and our summer school programming. We're collecting students and teachers and all of that. So a lot will still be happening throughout the summer, so we're excited for that.
Great, and thank you in advance to all the staff that helped make all that happen.
Yes.
So very appreciative. All right, great. Well, Cecilia, I think this is your.
Drumroll.
Your last one.
It's very short and sweet tonight. I know we're all ready to go home, right? So in your packet, I have a year-to-date budget report uh, dated May thirty-first for your review. Um, and as that, we agreed at my last meeting, I will be putting together um, omnibus transfers.